First item on the agenda is roll call.
Alderman Beebe.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Scully.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
There is a foreign present, ma'am.
Next item is the indication by Pastor David Hacken from Faith United Methodist Church. And the Pledge of Allegiance from Alderman Schaefer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the party, sir. You know that today is an anniversary that you and I should both be grateful for. Matter of fact, we're probably all to be. It was about, uh, two or eight years ago, give or take a little bit, that the first public school in all of the western world was established, Boston Latin Grammar School, sixteen thirty-five. I'm a product of that, as you are as well. Mike, I know you are, most of us are, but common school, it's a very important chink in what we know to be America. That America is based upon this idea that all of us are capable of understanding complex ideas. Our political system depends on it. That when we vote for people and elect people, that they come out of that common background, that they'll be able to digest those things and be able to make good decisions that are for the common good. I'm grateful, I'm always grateful for our public schools and I, I, I don't want to sound self-serving, but most of you know that I've served the public schools here for a long time, but I, what I think, what I remember is that, in my history, is that that school was started for just little people like us. It allowed little people like us to grow to have dreams and aspirations and be a part of something as great as America or as great as Grand Valley has become. And so I just, I just remind you of that because we trust such an important thing to you, just common people making great decisions, far-reaching decisions, lasting decisions that affect a lot of other people. And so gracious God, I give you thanks for gifts of every kind. Gifts particularly like that of those who began the common school, so that common folks like Mike and I and maybe some others that hear in the sound of our voice could grow to read and write and to develop the tools that would cause us to dream great dreams about cities that would be good places to raise our families, good places to work and to play and to enjoy the fruits of our labors. And so as these men and women have gathered to make important decisions for the common good, I just pray a blessing on each one of them, Father, that you would instill them with wisdom beyond their understanding and a compassion for those that they serve and that all that they do would glorify those who worked for the common good of all. Bless them, we pray, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remember about the place you called.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I have some changes this evening. The first item is I need to pull Bill B-12-12. It's the interest egress for State Bank. We received a phone call today from our kind, we have some additional questions about this, I'd like to pull those to the next meeting. I'd also like to add a bill, it's Bill B-12-13. It's a contract of validity screening services. And that would end up being item thirteen B. Is that correct, Jeanne?
Yes.
No.
B-12-13.
Thanks. And, um... That's all, Jeanne, is that it?
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
I have motion from Alderman Headley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion on the amended agenda? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Uh, next item is this is a petition. Uh, we ask citizens come forward to the podium if they wish to address the board. Uh, then please address the board with your comments. Do we have any citizens this evening who would wish to address the board? Seeing none, move on to citizen agenda.
I move that we accept citizen agenda.
I have motion from Alderman Scully to accept the citizen agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion on the citizen agenda? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Uh, next item is proclamations for the Grand Valley Police Department VIPS program. And if I may, can I have all of the VIPS residents and attendants quick and come on forward? You guys are all hiding in the back, back there, aren't you?
Thanks in case they need to get out, to help with something.
We're out of here, Alderman, this radio. Uh, whereas the volunteers in police service VIPS program was established by the Grand Valley Police Department in two thousand and ten, whereas elected citizens have successfully completed the Citizens Academy and fulfilled the requirements for the VIPS program, whereas during the year two thousand and eleven, members of the VIPS donated one thousand four hundred and seventy-five hours of service to the Grand Valley Police Department, performing a wide variety of services, including crowd control, traffic control, safety education, administrative duties, and supportive police functions. And whereas the hours volunteered by VIPS supplemented various duties that wouldn't have been normally been performed by police officers and administrative personnel, and whereas the hours of service provided by the dedicated members of VIPS had saved the city of Grand Valley an estimated twenty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars in cost that would have been designated for paid police personnel. Now therefore, as proclaimed, the city of Grand Valley, Board of Aldermen and I, Mayor Mike Todd, acknowledge the service and commitment of the volunteers in police service for the city in which they continue success in future endeavors. Now we give this proclamation to Chief Ambrose, and if any of you would like a copy, just let us know, we can get you a copy for yourself.
And you too could be a part of this illustrious group if you join our Citizens Academy, which is coming up April fourth. Quick plug, everybody probably found one in their chair.
Uh, seeing no presentations, public hearings, previous business or new business, we'll move on to ordinances.
This is Bill number twelve dash zero four, I mean, called for its second reading. It will be ordinance number twenty-two oh three. An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase a two thousand and twelve F-40 F-250 truck.
Mayor, I move, what ordinance was that?
Twenty-two oh three.
Mayor, I move we accept Bill twelve dash oh four for its second reading, making it ordinance number twenty-two oh three.
I have motion from Alderman Headley to approve Bill twelve dash zero four for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-two zero three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Alderman Beebe.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
This is Bill twelve dash zero five, called for its second reading, which would become ordinance twenty-two oh four, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to make a payment of funds to support the Jackson County Executive Educational Campaign regarding mass transit in Jackson County, Missouri, as initiated by the county executive.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill B-12-05, making it ordinance twenty-two oh four.
Okay. I have motion from Alderman West to approve Bill twelve dash zero five for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty-two zero four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
No.
Alderman Beebe.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
No.
Alderman West.
Yes.
The first reading of Bill number twelve dash zero six, an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding made and entered into by and among owner-operator Independent Driver Association, OIDA, and the City of Grand Valley, Missouri City.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill B-12-06 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion from Alderman West to approve Bill twelve dash zero six for its first reading, bring it back by title one for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Just to clear this up, I'd like to bring to the board's attention that this has been a parcel of land that's been in quite a bit of discussion since the beginning of the MoDOT project and the interchange revision has come to light, and that there would just basically be a swap of land. And this memorandum of understanding highlights that agreement that will work between OIDA, MoDOT, and the city to be able to facilitate the relocation of the forty highway. And I wanted to thank Mr. Johnston, Mr. Jim Johnston, I spoke with him quite a few times on the phone, as well as Jeff Hardy from MoDOT, they were very instrumental in helping get this all together. You, I had entertained the thought of coming to the board tonight and asking for a double read, because we were trying to meet with MoDOT's right-of-way deadline on February twentieth, but due to the interest egress issues that are occurring with State Bank, you do need to wait two weeks in wait in order to try to get that back in front of you, to get that approved. If the board so desired this evening and you would entertain the thought of putting it on for double read, that's fine, and if not, if not a simple read tonight, it'd be just fine. If you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer those for you this time.
Does the State Bank issue slow anything else down or stop anything?
It shouldn't, I know that they've got some additional questions on their end that they're trying to get worked out, so the ones that we're familiar with, we're trying to get done and we'll push it on through, but I know that MoDOT's trying to do quite a bit to get things done by the twentieth, but I, I'm not sure they'll meet that deadline. Um, I had talked to Jeff, he would prefer, of course, that we could try to get it done by the twentieth. I don't see that happening because our next meeting is not until the twenty-seventh. That's right. And, um, so twenty-seventh will work for MoDOT in the back there.
We're waiting on sign that D was, MoDOT's asking us to do, until the ordinance gets put through, um, so that would speed up us doing the side of the house.
That's true. So if you wanted to entertain, as I stated earlier, if you entertained the thought to go ahead and add it to a second read for tonight, it would be helpful to MoDOT so that they can get the D paperwork through. If not, that that's something that occurs after the twenty-seventh and that takes a little bit longer acting out.
What do you motion for that act to approve this, McCrory?
You'll need a motion to adjourn that.
Okay. Well, if someone wishes to do that, we can vote on this one and someone can make a motion to amend the agenda if they want to have first second read tonight. Any discussion then on this particular motion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Right, did someone wish to make a motion to amend the agenda?
I move that we amend the agenda to get the second reading tonight.
I have motion from Alderman Scully to amend the agenda to include Bill twelve dash zero six for its second reading tonight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman West. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
This is... Yeah.
I just was waiting to see, are we voting for one time or two times tonight?
That, that was the added back one for two times.
I...
Alderman Beebe, who would you poll?
No.
Alderman West?
Yes.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman Scully?
Yes.
Alderman Totten?
I'll abstain because I don't know. I can't abstain?
No.
Because I don't know.
Alderman Schaefer, okay. Can we put that in the agenda? Let's do it now. I've got to go into it.
Bill number B-12-06, I mean, called for its second reading, which would become ordinance twenty-two oh five, an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding made and entered into by and among owner-operator Independent Driver Association, OIDA, and the City of Grand Valley, Missouri City.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill B-12-06 for its second reading, um, making it ordinance number twenty-two oh five.
I have motion from Alderman West to approve Bill twelve dash zero six for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty-two zero five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe?
No.
Alderman Scully?
Yes.
Alderman Totten?
No.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman West?
Yes.
This is the first reading of Bill number B-12-07, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Allied Refreshments Bank for vending machine services.
I move that we accept Bill B-12-07 for its second reading, making it ordinance number... I'm sorry. I move that we accept Bill B-12-07 for its first reading and bring it back for a second reading by title only.
I have motion from Alderman Beebe to accept Bill twelve dash zero seven for its first reading, bring it back by title one for its second reading. Do I have a second? Second, second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion on the motion?
I just had a question. Was this the same company we had prior with the vending machines?
No.
So this is a different company than used to service?
Yeah, this is, this is a brand new company. We have done business with this company, to my knowledge.
And we searched, I guess, you did back search and everything to make sure there wasn't another company or more competitive company locally that we could have used?
Actually, when I, I was the one that looked at this project and this product, um, looked at Allied Refreshments because the majority of school districts use them because they provide, provide a higher concession percentage rate back to the organizations. Um, when we looked at what we were receiving from Public Cola, they provided a lower concession percentage in the ten to thirteen percent range, where Allied Refreshment guarantees a twenty percent return on concessions. And so because it's a cooperative agreement, but other organizations have competitively bid, that was the reason we went ahead and used them.
What would the, the amount of return to the city, where would that money be going to?
Um, what we were hoping was, we outlined it here, now, the Parks Department currently budgets their revenues for utilization of operations, of park and recreation. We are hoping that by adding move-in machines here at City Hall and one at Public Works, that we would be able to utilize those ones and for employee events.
Employee events. Would they be placed out here? I see that the City Hall, two of them, but I didn't know where they were placed at.
Yeah, right here, the one that's going to be here, um, because there's really not room out there, it would be put downstairs just outside, uh, community development at the base of, where you get off the elevator, there's that wall there on the left, we'd put it there. And then the one for Public Works, do you know his location, Jeanne? Meeting room? Okay, thanks.
Additional questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
This is the first reading of Bill number B-12-08, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to approve authorized representatives and purchase from the Missouri State Agency for circle of property that's asked.
Mayor, I move we accept Bill twelve dash zero eight for its first reading, bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion from Alderman Headley to accept Bill twelve dash zero eight for its first reading, bring it back by title one for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scully. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure we're talking about, um, like snowplows and that type of thing. We're not talking any property, property and...
Yeah, no, no real estate.
Right.
This would be items that could range from vehicles to shelving, to office supplies, to paper, to, um, chairs, to, there's a wide variety of things. Anything that the federal government doesn't want anymore, they sell to the state, the state ends up purchasing and provides it as a work area for local agencies to be able to purchase at a discounted rate.
Who would you be giving the authority to?
It's attached here under the form as to those individuals that would have that ability. Currently, it's the city administrator, finance director, public works director, chief of police, parks and recreation director, the city clerk, police sergeant, detective, assistant to the parks and rec, community center manager, and the public works operations manager.
Do they have a budget, I mean, do they have...
Yeah, typically, it's on an asinine basis, they would have to have a budget before they could purchase any of those items. And of course, if it came within the purchasing threshold of over ten thousand dollars, it would have to come before the board. But it's a good way to be able to purchase, um, like paper. Like, my prior life at Clay County, used it intermittently, depending upon what the items were. Um, I know one time they had paper for like a dollar a ring, and, uh, so it was a great opportunity to be able to buy as much as possible. Of course, it wasn't the brightest, whitest paper, but it's paper, so we're able to utilize that.
But I'm, I'm referencing like, um, I want to make sure that, like, the Parks Department can't go out and say, "Oh, I need this," but it keeps it under, you know, the ten thousand. Is there any checks and balances to this? On how much, like, any of the different departments can do it?
Well, if, um, for example, if they were looking at a minivan or something that was there and wanted it to, and it was eleven thousand dollars, it still has to come to you, but if it's, if it's below the ten thousand dollar threshold for purchasing, um, that you provide to your department heads, then they would still be able to purchase.
Can I give an example? Whenever they started the animal control, uh, to purchase some of the cages that we have the animals in down there at Public Works, instead of going out and spending probably ten grand on brand-new cages and putting them together, they have that kind of stuff down there, Alderman Totten, for a fraction of that cost. So, I mean, it's a really bar, and we're not sending people, I don't, it's not like any of our employees are going to go out and haphazardly to Je, this is in Jefferson City. So we would direct them to head down there to pick something up, something like that.
Yeah, only if it was worth our while. And they send out a list so that you can see what they have available, so you don't have to go down and see it yourself, you can actually look at it. And they typically have staff there that if you are interested in something that's, I don't know, a sorter or a...
But they talk this all over with the department heads and the rest of it? It's not just done on...
And they'll tell you whether it's working or not, whether it's in good shape, if it's not in good shape.
I just want to check some balance.
Yeah.
And it's not something that we utilize, I don't even think anybody went last year, to be honest, would get down there and actually get anything, I don't think. My department's probably utilizing more than anybody else. You know, we, one time picked up some laptops, computers and stuff, and just different old things, real cheap.
I think what she's asking is, if, if you're a detective looking at that, say for the cages and say the laptop.
Right.
They're going to talk to you, you're going to talk to Alexa before you do it.
Yeah, or not.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it definitely has to follow the, yeah, nobody can just do it firsthand, you have to follow up.
That's why we limit it to people that can actually go down there and, nobody can just go down there and walk in there and start doing it, you have to be on the list. Approved list.
And this is part of your management team.
So the checks and balances basically is the, is the approved twenty-twelve budget.
Correct.
I just want to make sure someone's going to yell at me.
Additional questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
This is the first reading of Bill number twelve dash zero nine, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into a cooperative agreement with Jackson County, Missouri, for dispatching services.
I move that we accept Bill number B-12-09 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion from Alderman Totten to approve Bill twelve dash zero nine for its first reading, bring it back by title one for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Could, Aaron, could you speak to the, uh, I guess, talk, as we discussed this afternoon on the phone concerning, you know, my questions around the E-911 tax and the, I guess, the difference between the cell phone, not getting the funds from the cell phones versus landlines and so on.
Nine-one-one taxes, taxes you guys see on your, on your phone bills that you get from your landline phones as well as mobile phones. However, Missouri is the only state in the United States that does not collect nine-one-one tax from mobile phone units, and we probably never will. I don't know that we ever will, if you're aware of that. What that, what that does is it's limiting the money that's going in from that tax and Mid-America Region Council Mark controls all the nine-one-one tax money, and they send it out to the, uh, the primary, uh, communication points, PSEs, which are in the, you know, you have Kansas City's obviously one, Independence, Blue Springs, Raytown has their own dispatch, Sugar Creek, Police Summit, uh, some of those cities that way have their own dispatches, so they get a portion of that money. Unfortunately, how it is right now in today's world, about seventy-one percent of the tax that's generated comes from cell phone usage, which we don't get. So we get the rest of that leftover coming there. So the money, part of it is, is really drying up, and it's drying up at a rate of about two percent a year is what Mark figures it from like this year, probably another two percent's going to get added to that seventy-one percent, and it's going to gradually get worse as we go along. So therefore, uh, like the Jackson County Sheriff's Department who dispatches for eight other agencies to include themselves, you know, they're only running on three or four different dispatchers, they're running on antiquated equipment, the money's not flowing back to them from Mark to help pay the upgrade, the necessary upgrades on the equipment, the maintenance, and the proper staff. That's why last year, when I came to you, we had been in those discussions with the county, that they had to look at an alternative way to charge those funds, and that's by charging the city for the services. And they base that solely on the nine-one-one, uh, calls for the fiscal year of two thousand and ten. So that does not include those non-emergency calls, which they get a lot of as well, that probably, in essence, take up more time than a nine-one-one call. Nine-one-one calls run pretty quickly, where in non-emergency, there's probably a lot more talking and explanation about it, nobody's in a panic mode. So anyways, um, you know, and in checking around, I remember when we were going through this process, Clack, Cass, Clay, uh, many of the other counties, Lafayette, and they dispatched for other cities such as Higginsville and whatnot, they're, they're paying them a fee and have been for years. We have never paid a fee up until starting last year, which last year, we, you know, we started it midway through the year, so we paid half of the amount, so...
And this is a, the contract that we entered into last year that is in part of your pocket is, does state that we have agreed to a three-year, we're in the second of a three-year agreement, although it also gives us the provision for ninety-day out if, if we're ever needed, but, um, this is the second year and it is at a set rate. So the thirty-one thousand...
It is thirty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-two cents is good for this year as well as next year. Now, next year, of course, we'll be in talks with the county, you know, starting up at some point to give us a heads up of what we're going to be looking like in two thousand and fourteen.
And that could all change depending on legislation on cell phones or whatever.
Yeah. I'm not real confident in that one, but, yeah. Does that help? I convolute any of those.
The other budget for getting forty-some dollars, right?
No, I think I've budgeted that amount. I think there's some other things that are coming out of that line item, that forty thousand is just what's in the line item total? There were some other, uh, because that came out of some contracts and stuff like that that we had. Uh, that, that was also included, the CJC emergency management ta, uh, money.
Let me have my figure for it.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
This is the first reading of Bill number B-12-10, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Lexipol for knowledge management system online services.
I move that we accept Bill number B-12-10 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion from Alderman Totten to approve Bill twelve dash ten for its first reading, bring it back by title one for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Seconds.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
If, if you find out it's not, um, of value to you, can we're back out of that before eighteen-month period?
Yeah, that's what, uh, Mr. Cook's been working on, and I think Matt even got previewed to some of that. Do you agree?
Yeah.
Yes.
Some more questions or discussion? Seeing none... Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say a sign.
It says, uh, first read of bill number twelve dash, uh, B twelve dash eleven, ordinance authorizing the formation of an industrial development corporation in the city of Grand Valley, Missouri, and determining and approving certain matters related thereto.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill B twelve dash eleven for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I motion Aldrin West to approve bill twelve dash eleven for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Aldrin Heathley. Any discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to bring to the board's attention today, uh, that we're doing a, a industrial development authority, or a corporation, um, that we had previously, um, let go back in the nineties, and we've got Joe Lopper here, who's our economic development attorney, and I'd like Joe to come forward and explain, um, how an IDA is formed, and more importantly, how it's utilized.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Last week, uh, we had three citizens of the city of Grand Valley submit an application that requests the board's permission to form an industrial development corporation in the city. This application was prompted by a request from city staff and city's consultants on the Marketplace project, uh, based on guidance, uh, from the city's bond council and, and myself as, as Economic Development Council, uh, regarding that financing. And so, what I thought I would do is walk through just a couple of issues for you tonight, maybe some questions that you might be, uh, raising in your own minds right now, and I could put those to rest for you. Well, I'll start with, uh, real quick, is why does the city need an IDA? In, in review of the authority that the city needs to carry out its annual appropriation pledge for the bonds that will be issued, uh, for the Marketplace project, the city's bond council has advised, uh, that the city should use what's called a conduit issuer, uh, for that, uh, for those bonds, and, uh, common, uh, conduit issuers out there are the Missouri Development Finance Board, you might have heard of MDFB, um, there's also the Jackson County Industrial Development Authority, uh, obviously countywide, MDFB is statewide, and then most cities have, uh, their own industrial development authorities, uh, at the local level. The, uh, we looked at these options, uh, as, as consultants to the city, and, uh, the reasons for, for not really wanting to go with the statewide or the countywide, uh, conduit issuer is because the larger the conduit issuer, the more debt they issue on a regular basis, the less likely it is that the, the debt that will be issued will be called, uh, will be considered what's called bank-qualified, and the, the short story of that is that if we can't get bank-qualified, uh, debt issue, that, then the interest rate actually goes up, and there's less proceeds available to pay for the project. So, the best thing to do here, uh, in our opinions, is to, is to go forward with a, uh, doing a conduit issuer through the, uh, the city's, uh, IDA. So, uh, once we looked into that issue, it was determined that the city did have an IDA, it was, uh, created in August of nineteen eighty-one, but unfortunately, in May of nineteen ninety-two, it was administratively dissolved. What that means is, you probably, uh, the past boards and past administrations here probably did not, uh, keep up with the annual filing requirements and the annual fee that's due, if you weren't, uh, if it wasn't, uh, very actively used, and obviously, you haven't needed one since, uh, in the last twenty years, but the time, uh, now is ripe for, for an IDA. So, what is an IDA? IDA is an acronym for, uh, Industrial Development Authority. Uh, this is a bit of a, a misnomer, uh, IDAs are actually industrial development corporations. These are, uh, a type of corporation set up by Missouri law, you may be familiar with general business corporations or not-for-profit corporations, they're, they have their own little chapters in the Missouri, uh, revised statutes, uh, so do industrial development corporations, they're at chapter three forty-nine. The statutes, uh, these, the, the information in chapter three forty-nine set out the rules for these corporations and limit their authority to act. IDAs are private corporations, once they're formed, they're not considered a political subdivision of the state, and they are a distinct legal entity from the city or the county, uh, that, uh, that creates it. Another question you may have in your mind is, how is an IDA formed? Uh, IDAs can only be formed by municipalities, cities, towns, villages, or counties. They have to be formed by resolution or order. Uh, we are actually going to do an ordinance in this case, and case law, uh, sets out that, that ordinances include all of the elements of a resolution. We wanted to do ordinance because we felt that you would have a more complete review of that, to actually have an opportunity to bring it forward this evening, and then bring it forward, uh, again, once, uh, questions have been answered about that. Once an ordinance has been approved by this board, uh, the applicants will file articles of incorporation, uh, with the Missouri Secretary of State, along with the filing fee, uh, filing fees nominal, it's like, I think it's fifty-eight bucks, I think is the actual number. Um, the Missouri Secretary of State will review the application, and if they approve it, they just simply ought to issue a certificate of incorporation. The IDA board members at that point, uh, would then need to meet to ratify the formation, adopt bylaws, and then begin work as an industrial development, uh, corporation. Another question you may have is, well, what authority would an IDA have if we create one? I can tell you that the, the primary purpose is to provide a, provide for financing for projects that promote commercial or industrial development in your community. Uh, these corporations only have the, the authority that's given to them in chapter three forty-nine, um, and those things include the, uh, promotion and solicitation of industrial or economic development projects, uh, to acquire and equip real property, personal property, uh, to lease and collect rents for properties that can be owned, uh, and most importantly, for our situation, uh, to issue and loan the proceeds of either bonds or temporary notes. Temporary notes, uh, if they're issued by the IDA, cannot exceed five years, revenue bonds cannot exceed forty years. Any debt that's issued by the corporation is not a debt of the city. Again, these are, it's a separate legal entity, once you've, you've created it, uh, and these entities can issue bonds that are payable from the, the revenues from a TIF project, which is exactly what we're looking at, uh, in this circumstance. IDAs can also collect fees and other charges, uh, in, uh, undertaking other services. If an IDA is dissolved, any property or any rights or interests that the IDA has folds back into the city or county that creates it, here's city, so, um, ultimately, even though they're a separate legal entity, whatever the IDA creates, once it goes away, if it ever goes away, will fold right back into the city. Uh, so how does IDA financing typically work? Uh, the IDA issues bonds that are payable from TIF revenue, and, and I'm going to speak specifically to the, the instance of, of what we're trying to do here, is, is to help with the, the TIF financing for the Marketplace project. The IDA will issue bonds that are payable from TIF revenue, and the city and the IDA then will enter into a contract called a financing agreement, and then, under that agreement, um, obviously, I'm going to paint with a broad brush here, what, what the IDA will do is, it will promise to sell the bonds to the marketplace and provide the money from those bond sales, uh, back to the city for whatever development project it's trying to undertake. On the flip side, the city will promise to pay back the money that was, that was earned in the bond sale, plus interest, from the funds that are captured by the tax increment financing plan that was already approved. Another facet of, of how that financing works is, the IDA and a bank or a trust company will enter into an agreement called a trust indenture. You guys have done bonds and trust indentures before. Under that agreement, the IDA will promise to pay the debt service on the bonds that were sold to the marketplace, and the trustee for the bank will agree to administer, uh, the exchange of funds, uh, as they come in from the source of funds, in our case, to be the, the TIF, uh, revenue would be going in to pay the, the trustee, the trustee would then pay the bond holders. That is, uh, my summary for you, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, or anything specific about the IDA, if, if it comes to mind.
Something that we might add here is, um, you might want to talk about how, uh, the three applicants are brought forward, and then, um, uh, once their application, uh, is approved by this governing body, and it goes to the state, which will need the help of the, uh, city attorney to do, um, then a board is appointed.
That's correct. There is a, kind of, just a basic procedure, uh, that, that, um, I did kind of gloss over, so let's, let's hit that. What the statutes require is, in order for an IDA to be formed, you have to have, uh, three, at, at a minimum, three applicants, uh, come forward, and they have, each of these applicants have to be a registered voter of the city and a taxpayer at the city, uh, for at least one year prior to, uh, their, uh, application being, uh, put in. And what will happen is, those applicants will get together, and they will, uh, sign a document, uh, I think I've got the blank form here, but you, I believe in your packet, you had the, uh, the signed application, but, uh, you just have an application that's required by law, uh, this application, you know, specifically requests this board to, to form, uh, to give these incorporators the authority to, uh, form this, this, uh, industrial development corporation. You do, you give that authorization by ordinance. Once we have that ordinance, uh, ordinance and that authorization, those incorporators will then take articles of incorporation, so it's the, the, uh, organic or the creation documents for the IDA, they will sign those, and that's what is ultimately filed with the Secretary of State. Secretary, Secretary of State will review that and take in the filing fee, and then they will issue the, uh, the certification. Once that is done, um, what I mentioned before is, the IDA's board of directors will meet. One of the items, and one of the reasons we wanted to bring this forward tonight, uh, as an ordinance, on the first read, and then bring it back, I believe, do you, do you have a slate of five yet, or others?
Still finishing that.
Still working on, okay.
Yeah.
In, you'll notice, uh, in the proposed ordinance this evening, there probably are blanks, uh, for the, uh, for the five individuals who will serve as the board of directors for the corporation. The mayor, with the consent of a majority of the board of aldermen, make the decision about who will run this corporation, and into the future, the, the folks who, who run that, they, they serve for, for specific terms, much like you do, although they're not elected, they're appointed by the mayor and, and the consent of, of a majority of the board of aldermen, so you maintain, as a city, control over who runs your, uh, industrial development, uh, authority. Once you've named this board, we'll put those into the, uh, the second reading of the ordinance, you'll name those board members, and, and once the, uh, the corporation has been, uh, formed, that board can then meet, and then begin to do the things that are necessary to, uh, ratify the, the, its creation, the formation, uh, they'll get together to set up the bylaws, which have been approved, uh, by the city, uh, staff and, and consultants, uh, to go forward, uh, to conduct their business, and they'll be in a position then to, to be able to, uh, uh, do the authorization then to, to issue, uh, the bonds to the conduit issuer. Ultimately, what will happen in this circumstance is, the conduit issuer will issue the bonds, but they can't do it without the approval of this board, in, in the concept that this entity is, is created to be a conduit issuer, but you, as the board, have control of that TIF money that comes in, through your approval of that TIF, and you will have to approve the issuance of bonds as this goes forward, so you are not giving up any sort of, uh, you're not giving up any sort of control with respect to the issuance of the bonds, of, uh, just primarily, we need to go through this conduit issuer to make the annual appropriation pledge work, uh, appropriately.
How much training do these people on our board going to have to totally grasp everything that they're doing?
The, uh, the board itself, and, and my understanding is that, that what, uh, what we're looking to do here is, is we're trying to identify individuals in the community who will have, you know, a good business sense, people who have, uh, a good, uh, background in, in, uh, running a business, or in, you know, having good ideas for, uh, economic development, and in the end, the, the board itself, uh, doesn't necessarily need special training in that area, because ultimately, the, uh, the decisions, you know, are, the, the types of, of issuances that will come forward to this board will always kind of be fed to them through the city, so it's kind of being, it's being brought to them...
Figureheads, is what you're saying, except...
Uh, not, I wouldn't say figureheads necessarily, because that's why we're trying to identify individuals who, who are, uh, compatible in these areas and, and have knowledge in these areas, but they will be, uh, uh, not instructed, but they will be highly informed by, uh, city staff and the city's consultants as we go through these issuances.
If we've operated for twenty-some years without one of these, I mean, why right now do we need this type of thing?
Right. Um, the, the reason again is that, you know, we do have other options for conduit issuers, we could go through MDFB, which is the statewide issuer, or we could go with Jackson County's IDA, uh, to do theirs. The problem that we run into is, because those issuers issue so many bonds, so many dollars' worth of bonds every year, we run the risk that an issuance by those, uh, entities would not be what's considered bank-qualified, and if we can't get a bank-qualified, uh, issuance of the bonds, then that causes our, our interest rates, uh, to, to increase, and then it's, it's not as an attractive, uh, investment by bond investors out there.
We've issued a lot of bonds...
Yeah.
...in these twenty-some years. I mean, have we been in that type of a situation? I mean, I, I guess it looks to me like it's just another layer of whatever you want to call it.
Right. Uh, the, but, the, the distinction, I think, here, between here and some of the other bond issuances you've done before, whether, you, you, it may be the difference between, uh, you've done general obligation issuances as opposed to revenue, this is a straight revenue bond...
Double, actually.
...issuance here. The other issue is that the way that the TIF bonds are being done, uh, you'll recall that, well, you may not personally recall, but the board, uh, approved annual appropriation bond backing, annual appropriation backing of those bonds when they will be issued, and in order to do that type of an issuance, it's your bond council's opinion that, that the city will have to go through a conduit issuer, so it's not a circumstance where, where the city can really issue the bonds directly at all, according to your bond council, okay? I, I guess I should have had them here tonight, I didn't, uh, we can certainly have them here at the next meeting, if that's necessary, uh, to answer any questions about that, but the, the concept here is that the city itself can't issue directly the bonds if it's going to do the annual appropriation, has to do so through a, through a conduit, and we're just trying to find the best solution possible, uh, on the conduit issuer. We think, uh, in this case, it is for the city to, to restart its industrial development authority, uh, as many, many cities, uh, throughout the state do, uh, because then you have the ability to control the fees that are charged, you have the ability, uh, to, uh, ensure that, that you have kind of a clean path to the, uh, issuance, and primarily, again, you have the ability to, to know that your issuer is not going to exceed the amount to, to make the debt, so that it's no longer bank-qualified, which would, you know, kind of hurt the issuance.
I think it would have been very beneficial to see what other options there are besides this option.
Uh, do, would you like additional information about...
Absolutely.
...MDFB, or the, uh...
I really think we need additional...
I, I agree.
...information on this subject.
Am I hearing a motion to table?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we table this.
Okay, I got motion from Aldrin, uh, Aldrin BD to, uh, table bill twelve dash eleven, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Aldrin Totting, any discussion on a motion to table?
When would you like to table that, too?
Well, it seems like...
Do you want to table it to the next meeting on the twenty-seventh? We think we have...
Is that, we need the, the bond, bond council, and who else do you reckon we need?
We'll provide in the, in the staff report also, some additional information on the conduit issuers, and...
And you can get some additional information on the other, you'll get information on the other ones also?
Sure.
Okay. Is that what, anything else additional we need other than that, or...
Now, what is the protection on the tips? That's just like, I know, we had one tip in town that's having a really big problem. I heard, I'm not really in favor of letting a lot of money go in, you know what I'm saying? Because...
Well, all we're doing at this point in time is, is carrying out what was approved in, uh, twenty-ten, uh, with, with the TIF application at that point, so we're just proceeding along with that, uh, that TIF plan and with that TIF contract.
Do you know about when?
When? Yeah, that was approved, uh, the, uh, the TIF was approved in September of twenty-ten, I think the...
I've got the paperwork at home, so...
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, so we're back on a motion to table then, any additional discussion on a motion to table? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Bring that back up to twenty-seventh, then?
Thank you.
All right.
I have a question for you specifically.
Okay.
Before the meeting, you said something to me about, uh, that what you were concerned with the system when brought to us, was that it was the law, the state...
Well, we, we, we need to have...
...that exists?
We, we, we need to have a conduit issuer. We, we, we need to have, we need to have one. It doesn't have to be this, but we need to have...
Oh, I just want to clarify, like, you told me...
All right.
I was going to say, well, he didn't tell me the truth.
Well, we, we need to have, maybe not the law, but we need to have one, Aldrin Al Law, we need to have it, so...
Can I ask a question, Joe?
Can I ask a question, Joe? Joe, can you say that by the city management, they have more control than they do the county or state?
For the IDA, that is correct.
Okay, this is the first read of bill number B twelve dash thirteen and ordinance authorizing the city administrator enter into an agreement with validity screening solutions for employee candidate background checks.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill number B twelve thirteen for its first reading and bring it back for the second reading by title only.
Motion, Alvin Shaffer to approve bill twelve dash thirteen for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alvin Scully. Any discussion?
Joe, this is for all employees.
This is for all potential employees, I'm sorry. This is for, uh, individuals that are interested in becoming employees of the city of Grand Valley and before they're hired, who do background checks on them.
I agree.
Did I answer your question, Alvin Beebe?
Yeah.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, next on my agenda is resolutions. Uh, seeing none, we'll move on to city attorneys' reports.
Attorney's report.
Uh, city administration staff reports.
Yes, uh, staff reports this evening. Our Parks and Recreation Director Shannon Davis has, uh, some ideas he wants to share with the board.
Uh, just real quick, this city just recently purchased, uh, three AEDs. Those, they're automated, uh, external configurators, uh, to, that you would use for someone who's experienced cardiac arrest. And the police department has four or five and have had them for three or four years if they have in their, their police vehicles. And we felt it was time that our city facilities have these in case, uh, the need arises. One will be in the community center to service both the building and the aquatic center. One here in city hall and one down in our public works building. As of tonight, uh, all of our city, uh, staff, with the exception of a few that are, uh, will be, uh, then certified to utilize, uh, the AEDs. Uh, we, we have seven additional staff that'll, that are going to Midwest Public Risk that's providing the training, uh, for, for no cost, uh, as well. So we're, uh, happy to have these, uh, in our possession and hopefully, uh, be monetized or be utilized.
I'd like to thank Shannon for coordinating the efforts on this as well as, uh, staff. They have done a great job and, and we had so many people volunteer that we went over our limit on the number of people that could be trained. So we're coordinating training for everybody so that we got training in and, uh, just speaks to the quality of your staff that, that everybody's concerned about, that help and welfare of their fellow employees and citizens that come in and access our facilities that, that wanna be trained, so kudos to everybody. Also, Chief Abrams?
Yep. I wanted to say, uh, thank you for those of you who donated, but Jeremy Burholz did the polar bear plunge recently and he did the super plunge. He raised a little over twenty-eight hundred dollars. So that was really good for the Special Olympics, so, uh, congratulations to him and again, thanks to anybody who may have donated to him. Also, uh, Officer Curtis Bainerlinen just, uh, completed the dare training. So, you know, Mike Amos left us here recently and, uh, Curtis was selected to go into the schools and he just completed his two-week training up in Minnesota and, uh, returned about a week ago. Just wanted to, to let you guys know that he did an excellent job. It's a very, very tough school. He had been through a lot of different schools. He's been in law force for about sixteen years. And he said, hands down, that was probably the toughest one he's ever been through, so. And that's consistently what I've heard about people go through that. You wouldn't think it would be, but it's pretty rough. So anyways, just wanna let you know that, thank you.
Um, I also have two items for the board this evening. First item is I wanted to let you know that I have been speaking with county executive Mike Sanders' office on attempting to coordinate a date where we can have a community around town meeting for citizens, uh, business owner, business owners, landholders, stakeholders within the city to come in and learn about, um, I, my apologies, but being new, I thought the prior meetings I already grabbed on and, uh, when I found that out, I went, nope, then we need to have a meeting. So hoping to do that sometime in the first part of March. And as soon as I have that data, I'll be sending it to everybody and that we'll be doing it in the community center. So I'll be coordinating that with Mr. Davis as well. Um, also, we'll be inviting, uh, citizens from Blue Springs and Oak Grove to attend should they like to come and get an update on the latest information that's available. And I'll also be talking with Mr. Fisher about putting additional information as a, uh, as public information into the, uh, local publications. The second item that I have this evening is, uh, I just wanted, today we had our first snow and, uh, wanted to thank staff and send that to Tom and to Ryan and say we pass that on, that, uh, they did a great job on our roads and, uh, everyone got in. I got in, say, it's a long drive, but I made it here and, well, hey, Grand Valley, didn't have any issues whatsoever. So I wanted to thank staff for the long hours 'cause they, they, they worked a long time to prep the roads and then out again today to push snow, so, good job.
I believe they were about four, four-thirty because there was two trucks going down maybe when I was out doing one of my walks.
All right. Uh, more of Alvin reports and comments. Alvin Beebe?
None at this time.
Alvin West?
Nothing at this time.
Alvin Headley?
Nothing at this time.
Alvin Scully?
Nothing at this time.
Alvin Totten?
Nothing at this time.
Alvin Shaffer?
Only this time.
Uh, mayor's reports. Uh, just that, uh, February twenty-third from four to six o'clock, if you haven't already heard, we are having a, a mayor's business social during that time. Uh, the over the community center, we're inviting local businesses to come in. We had one of these back in, it was in July, we did a luncheon. So we decided a little later today this time for those individuals who couldn't make the lunchtime. That way they could come to a later time if they couldn't make the other one. So sure, we'll have some of the, you know, repeat businesses there, but hopefully we'll have some, some ones also that could make it last time, so. Very good discussion last time. Hopefully we'll get some, hear some good ideas from them and pass through the discussions, so. Again, that's the twenty-third from four to six. Uh, that is all I have. And, you know, I think we have a need for an executive session, so. Having no need for an executive session, we will adjourn.